It is 5:30. If we could call the regular meeting of the Amherst Exempt Village Board of Education for January 4th, would you please, if you could stand and pledge the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, the free and fair, in this world with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Present.
Mrs. Gillis.
Present.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wackold's here.
I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as it is presented this afternoon, including any addends. Motion in a second, please. Any discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Gillis, hi. Mrs. Wackold.
Hi.
Dr. Messer. Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. Motion passed. Item five, hearing the public, I don't believe anyone has signed up to speak to us, so we'll move right on to item six, which would be the treasurer's report.
Good evening, board, good evening, members of the audience. I will not take too much time this evening, go to the next slide, please. All these little numbers, you do have a hard copy in front of you, briefly, I just want to go over. Right now, we are running at 2 million more in expenditures than revenue for the year. That just means that we have lower cash balances right now than we've had the rest of the year. January 31st is our first advance for the 2022 first half real estate collection. We will know more, obviously, at settlement at the beginning of March, what the first half for 2022 looks like. We're running just about $118,000 shot in line one compared to last year. In line two, we are running $700,000 less than last year. I believe I had shared with you that there were several public utility taxpayers that paid after the deadline, so we did not get it in the last fall settlement. And that's really all I want to share with you, the cash balance at the end of December is $19,700,000. Again, I indicate that the settlement so far has been less than fiscal '22, and we'll see what the first half collection holds for us. And then for purchase services, we are running just about $96,000 less in expenditures than last year at this time, and that's really just due to being able to direct expenditures to the Art Professor Grant instead of expending from the general fund. So if there are no questions on the forecast line item summary, let's move on to recommendations. There are a lot of recommendations this evening. Go ahead, Sarah. Item 7A and 7B are approval of meeting minutes, brought the December meeting as well as the organization meeting of January 9th. Standard items to be approved. Item 7C, the December financials were attached. There is a financial summary of cash reconciliation, the forecast line item reports for general fund, and Fund 16 were levy, as well as the accounts payable checklisted for the month of December. Item 7D, you'll see about a dozen appropriation changes for this year. So far, we have just a small increase for food service, and that is because they need the piece of equipment. And then all the rest are federal ones. We just talked about Art Professor, but actually, this one is for the homeless round two. And then we have various changes to the '22 and fiscal '23 federal grants due to issuing final expenditure reports, any that may have had carryover into the fiscal '23 grants. And so everything, as of today, is corrected for appropriations right now. There are some that have decreased, of course, those are fiscal '22 grants that have decreased because that grant now, the carryover from fiscal '22 grants, has moved into the fiscal '23 grants. Item E, you'll see an advance from the general fund to the Art Professor grant, and that is due to, we weren't able to issue project cash requests at the end of each month due to the final expenditure report that was issued September 30th, had not been approved yet. Now it's been approved, we've received the cash. And now, item 7F, we have returns of advance for the months of October, November, December. Item G are then now, of course, anything over $3,000 goes to the board for approval. Item H is a new agreement with Emma's Britain, who is part of our board council, but this is for a specific purpose, so we asked for a specific agreement. It is, I believe, just $2,000, and this may be very beneficial to us. They may end up benefiting from this, but I have a hunch that they're going to be upside down in this agreement. They are going to be reviewing weekly border revision and any valuation complaints that come through the county auditor. Used to be the county auditor had to notify the school district, but they, due to legislative changes, I won't define on that right now, but due to legislative changes and eroding away the public school district's rights and responsibilities, that is why Emma's Britain is going to have this agreement for border revision tracking. And then 7I are a variety of donations, anonymous and not anonymous, and these are all for your approval this evening. 7A through 7I.
Do we entertain a motion? Second, motion in a second. Is there a discussion or comments on 7A through 5? Hearing and seeing none, please call a roll.
Mrs. Gillis, hi. Dr. Messer. Mrs. Wackold.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Motion passed. Mr. Mulrath, superintendent's report.
All right, first, I'd like to recognize two staff members. Because they are presenting this month at a national conference, we had Deanna Kellblee, who was our nutrition services supervisor, go to San Diego to present the school nutrition industry conference. She was asked to be on a panel where they discussed supply chain issues. And so, as you can imagine, most of the people on the panel come from very large schools, Los Angeles, Detroit, et cetera, but they asked Deanna to represent small schools like Amherst. So she did a phenomenal job and was pretty good there. And then also, right now, actually, right now, Amanda Sears is presenting down in New Orleans for the Futures of Education Technology Conference. To our presentation, hers is on creating emotional wellness videos for students. And so she's presenting that actually right now, so I want to say a little prayer for her. You're more than welcome to, she could probably do some, she's phenomenal. So I just wanted to highlight those two individuals for their efforts in going around and promoting a great job we do at Amherst. Also, wanted to touch base on the item we have tonight, which is your approval for a bid to work on the construction for the Steel Makers space. So, as you're aware, we had three bids come in. Our expert analysis was that the bid should be around $664,000, that's from Blundo, who did the analysis for us. We had one bid come in around $660,000, another bid come in at $630,000, and then Williams Brothers came in at $445,000. So, because it was kind of an outlier, of course, we had GPV architects in the group to go back and take a look, did they miss something, or was there a reason why? And we looked, they looked for everything, and no, it's a solid bid. And I'll mention the two reasons I think that it's lower than others. One is we've done work with Williams Brothers before, and they know our building. So I think they understand some structural things in the building that the others didn't, which again, when you go in to do a project, you have to put in contingency, whatever, to make sure, you don't know what's behind the walls or on the ceiling, whatever. So I think Williams Brothers has a little more insight into our building. And then also, for example, all three had similar quotes around $200,000, $260,000 for materials, but the outlier was labor. So where, you know, Williams Brothers came in a certain amount, another bid came in twice that amount for labor. So that was important to look at, you know. So everyone was very similar on the materials and the construction of it, but the labor was, you know, high in some other ways. So we think it's an awesome bid, it's a great, great bid for us. Thinking back to last year, when we were going to do the project and put out the bid, our one bid came in at $700,000. So for it to come in so low, so thank you to Steve Sayers for putting up here, Chuck Grim, and also Joe Teller, everyone from last year, we kind of, so let's put a pause on this, it was a smart, great decision, and it's paid off. So as we look forward to future projects, hopefully, we're going to look at steel restrooms next. It's kind of freed up some funds to do that, so we're really happy about that bid tonight, and hopefully, it's approved by the board. And then real quick, some other quick updates. Wanted to mention the Sandstone Tax Incentive Financing, or TIFF, that we know is going on with the new proposed Sandstone development. Just so you're aware where we're at, our Leo council sent over revisions to the county's original agreement document. The county originally came back and said, no thanks to pretty much almost all of them. But they knew tonight was the deadline, and so just on Friday, the county came back, and I just got the new revisions today from Gary Stedronsky. So it appears that the county has agreed to almost all of our requests because it's a project they would like to do. And again, one of the things that the use of board requested when we looked at the TIFF was, one is make sure that the focus is solely on the project of the road going through the development and nothing more. So that was one thing we, the use of board wanted to have in there. The second thing we wanted to have in there was some consultation for the debt. The county, it's their decision on how they fund the project, what kind of debt service they go after. We can't control that at all, but we wanted to have at least, we wanted at least to be aware and know what it's going to be in case we have some better options for them to consider. So that's one thing we're looking out for. And also, the debt payment itself. You know, once the loan, the bond, whatever is set in place, and there's certain payments every month for however many years, we're not sure how much money will be coming in as far as tax revenue. So if the development gets built up pretty quickly, and a lot of tax revenue is coming in, the county could be holding on to some of that money throughout the years and building a nice reserve. So we wanted to make sure that if there was a nice reserve, we would like to either see if we could get payment from that, since it is our school tax dollars, or if it implied, say, let's say, a principal, so that we can, again, eliminate the debt as quickly as possible. So those are, again, some of the things that the use of board wanted to have in there. And so now that we have, I guess, their revised copy, we'll go back, take a look at that, and then I will, once we talk about council, I will then, of course, share that with all of you, and you'll have to have a discussion about how we can afford that. I will say this, there, the next, the county's meeting, that they could take action is February 27th. Our board meeting is February 27th. Plus, you know that the township is involved, on their end, they haven't taken anything, so I would just present to the board that I did share with them that if the board would consider, would possibly would consider a special board meeting between now and then to keep things moving, again, we're not, we don't have to do that, but I said we would consider something worth like that in a lot of the agreements toward that, okay? All right. Then real quick, I know on January 13th, we had a district-wide priority update for the staff, so just want to touch base real quick on a few things. One, the district leadership team, we put out the application, and we received over 30, correct, sir? Over 30 applicants. And again, we're going to start reviewing those, and like we said at the meeting, we're not looking for individual staff member names or people. We're looking for skills, characteristics, skill sets. And so we'll be looking at that with our core team without anyone's name on it. So we're looking for just who can bring something different, unique to the table. Who's been here a veteran long time, who's new to the district, who's great with communication, or whatever. So we'll do that coming up in a week or two. Awesome? Right, 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 thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Why'd you say that?
The facility planning committee, we're going to be starting, we have around, I think, 50 to 60 names of community members, staff members, and people within the community that we're going to contact and see who would like to be a part of that planning committee. We're hoping, you know, not everyone's going to respond or say they could be a part of it. We're hoping around 30, 35, 40 even, whoever could be a part of that process. So we'll keep you apprised of that situation, but we're going to start connecting with people in probably also the school to keep moving. We also presented some community survey results from the survey we did with Burgess and Burgess in the community. Burgess and Burgess is still breaking down the data, so I was able to give kind of answers to every question, but you know, we had staff members respond, community members respond, alumni, parents who are kids right now. And so each one of those groups might have a different response to each one of those questions. So that's a lot of breaking down the data, Dr. Messer, you understand, breaking down the data could take them off. So, so once we get some more of the data, I do, we are going to have to talk about how we present it to the community. So whether that's kind of a slideshow presentation, like we gave a staff priority update, or whether that might be some sort of comic conversation video we do, maybe with some various members of the district to kind of talk through the survey results, but I just want you to know that we are planning to do that. We want to be transparent, communicate with the community, so we're going to do that in the next couple of weeks. Transportation update real quick, I just wanted to update one item of transportation. Doug Cogdell and I met with TransFi, TrackStar, I'm sorry, TrackStar on January 12th. So we met with them and did a webinar and talked about all of the bells and whistles and possibilities of the program we already have. I'm so glad we did not move in another direction back in August, September, because a lot of what we need is in the program we already have. We do have some buses that don't have the proper equipment on there, and there is some software upgrade we might have to do, but as far as, it does what we want them to do, keep track of all of our bus routes, our bus drivers, where they're going, how they're driving, and they can communicate to us so that if a bus driver is over 4 miles an hour the speed limit, or 1 mile an hour the speed limit, we can set it so that it would send us an automatic email to our transportation supervisor or our mechanic. So it has all the things we want in there. So I'm encouraged, it's one of those situations where sometimes it goes slow and goes slow, and you look back and you're kind of glad you did that. So I think we're at that point. Also, in a week or so, we're going to be looking at Pick My Kid to see if that might be, again, a way to communicate with the entire district, not just powers and more. So that's just kind of, I wanted to know where we're at on that. And then finally, I'm going to turn it over to Director Casey Woak to introduce Thome, a football coach and high school social studies teacher.
Thanks, Mr. Mulrath, thanks for having us here tonight. I would say probably, I don't know, a couple months ago, six weeks, whatever, I guess it's been a while. Early December, we started a process of selecting a new football coach, and we had community members involved, we had some school board members involved, thanks to those who were a part of that process. Faculty, staff, can't thank everybody who, I mean, it was an extensive process where we had a lot of people involved to help us make the best decision we could for our football student athletes. And throughout the process, there was one candidate that stood out amongst everybody, and it was Coach Thome. And in doing background, the board would be happy to hear, not only is he a great football coach, but he's a great in the classroom. That came out clear as well, so excited to welcome Coach Thome, is a social studies teacher at the high school and our new football coach, he's already been working with our guys. They've gotten a taste of a little bit of a different process, and I think they're enjoying it, right, Coach?
Yes. Now, you know, real quick, thank you for this opportunity, my family and I are extremely grateful. I'm very humbled to be your next head football coach and social studies teacher. You just ready to go? All right.
Congratulations, Amherst.
Welcome, thank you.
Yeah, Casey sent a text, what was that, Saturday night?
Yeah, Saturday night, 9:15, he was taking down copies.
He let, yeah, he let, just tell me, I know that Coach was breaking down an opponent we have coming up already on a Saturday night, I don't know how late it was, but...
My gremlin, my 19-month-old, was sleeping, so I took the 20 minutes to get into some film.
So in case of that, what time was it, 11 o'clock or something? I text back at midnight, Joe texts back at 12:30. 1:00 AM, so we were all working, doing something. So I appreciate, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And then one final thing I wanted to do, and that is it is school board recognition month, and so I'm going to pass out certificates from the OSBA, also read a little proclamation here for all of you. Whereas our community values a quality education as a vital step along the pathway to success for our children, and whereas Mr. Rex Engel, Mr. Teresa Gillis, Dr. Amanda Messer, Mr. Mort Wackolds, and Mr. Mark Zappa contribute greatly to this community through their service on the Amherst Exempt Village Board of Education, and whereas these local decision makers set the policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operation, and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress toward the school district's goals and maintains a two-way communication loop with all segments of the community, and whereas these school board members are serving our community with integrity, honor, and commitment to our children's futures, now therefore, I, Mike Mulrath, superintendent, on behalf of the students, parents, faculty, and staff of the Amherst Exempt Village School District, hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Amherst Exempt Village School Board and proclaim the month of January 2023 a school board recognition month. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of the local school board members and working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. This show recognition whereof, I hereby fix my signature, it's 23rd day of January 2023. So thank you, all the way to there. Pass the sample, real quick. Thank you. There, four there, four?
We got.
Who's our fourth, sorry?
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, we would move on to the superintendent's report.
That would be? I just have a few programs that are going on in our buildings that I wanted to share with you guys and bring to your attention. This year, we have started a habit mentoring program between Steel and NOR student. We currently have 16 students involved, there are seven pairs, and once a week, these groups get together over at NOR, they have lunch, they play games, they, you know, hang out together. And this has been a labor of love of Christine Diaz and Jill Mayorka up here at Steel, and then Katie Kirschbaum and Chandler Kramer over at NOR coordinating all of this with the class. And so looking forward, this is our inaugural year with bringing a mentoring program in-house, and so I'm looking forward to kind of what's to come with that. Then, also, another exciting thing that's coming up is Kristen Kowalsik, who is one of our intervention specialists up here at Steel. She is also, does a lot of our transition programming for our kids. She has created work-based learning experiences that are going to take place three days a week with Mary Hollander, who is an intervention specialist up here. Her kids are going to be going out, and this is going to be starting with Amherst Public Library and Hot Dog Heaven. So we're starting this out with those two local businesses, hoping to expand to some other downtown businesses. You know, doing a lot of things, especially with our juniors and seniors, to actually get them out into the work world, doing some internships and things within these businesses to get ready for the world of work after high school. That's an exciting thing. And then finally, because I had a feeling it might come up, an update on our second harvest pantry. The order has been approved, it's now in the hands of second harvest. They're working on ordering all the equipment and things, so as soon as we get word that it's been ordered, we will have stuff starting to be delivered here for our shelving and for the packaging and such, and we'll be almost ready to bolt. So, some good stuff. That concludes my report.
Questions for Sarah? No questions, oh my goodness. That made everybody off easy. JBS report, JBS met last Thursday for their organizational meeting and regular board meeting. We're moving along, I'm going to probably at the February board meeting approve a contract to do some repairs to the exterior of the building where all the water keeps coming in. It's about a million and a half dollars that we're going to have to spend to make that happen before we start doing some things. It's being reviewed right now by the architect group and the workers, but I think that it's going to get approved and then it's working. So that project can start as soon as school is out, with a completion date earned in August, from that perspective. The other exciting thing is we're working very diligently on getting a LCD license program and a parking lot on the east side of the building, which is a bad parking lot, it needs resurfacing tremendously. Actually, got approved the way it was, because they didn't want it to be a big parking lot because the weight of the trucks destroys the parking lot anyway. So they were glad it was kind of in shape. Process of getting that parking lot emptied out, because it was just a storage for whatever nobody wanted to deal with is where it ended up in that parking lot. So that is happening in the process as well. So we're moving forward, we're also still discussing about putting a levy of some type on the ballot in November. I don't know where that will be yet. Quick update from the JBS, and again, all the spring stuff will be starting, to all the competitions and all that kind of stuff. Questions from the JBS? Nope, all right. What other committee reports do we have, and I know we have a legislative report, Dr. Messer?
Oh, first, just for informational purposes, these are for quarter months from January through March, some training opportunities and also events through the OSBA. There's a lot of free webinars tomorrow, there's one with the superintendent of public transportation in Ohio. And then the next thing, I believe, is February, or we talked about that last week. I guess we'll need to talk more about those things, like different people in the same place. I don't know how we do that, so, but those are those for your consideration. And then there's a regional spring conference, it's split to two days, just for if we can't meet one day, who else knows? It's the same deal, so I'm sorry it's so small. I can read those, but...
I was going to ask, can you read them?
Thank you. All right, so a lot of activity has happened between now and December, so our state board of education, you see some of the members there, all the room, those elected president, and Mark Manchester vice president. And they just released, I went through all of them, but they require under Senate Bill 310 to release like some cost studies for different topics, so I have to go through those and just read their findings, but that's all for those, for state board activity. So the 135th General Assembly started Thursday this month, and they re-elected for the House of Representatives Jason Stevens as the speaker and the minority chair is Allison Russo. The Ohio Senate, again, re-elected Matt Huston as the Senate President, and again, Tony Osmond, the majority leader. And the only committee information I saw so far is for, of course, what we're concerned about, the primary and secondary education committee, and it will be chaired in by Senator Andrew Brunner, who spoke at the OSBA Capitol Conference. So many things, many things have been signed from laying down season. That's just a quick recap of some of the house bills and senate bills. A lot of things that were separate bills, of course, were kind of, I guess, crammed together during the laying down, so I won't look through all of those, just some interesting things, our like head start updates. We were able to do raffles again, they corrected that. We were able to do raffles again, uh, they corrected that language in one of the, um, advice calls. Um, they're still trying to help with teacher shortages in Ohio, so they signed the two-year, he signed the two-year temporary educator license type, um, type bill. There's more detail online, I have a source there. And the August election has been eliminated except for if there's like an emergency, fiscal emergency for school districts and some other special considerations. Next slide, please. Let's see. And some senate committee activities. So the education committee held some sponsored testimony. Um, again, when we talked about last month, basically restructuring the state board, um, of education, Department of Education, they're looking to rename it. They're also looking to create position for Director of Education Workforce for this new entity committee that they're kind of put together. Um, and of course, they are looking to reform functions and responsibilities of the state board and superintendent. See, and then the oversight committee again held some sponsored testimony on Senate Bill eighteen. Um, a lot of it was about, um, thankfully we don't have to worry about this, but, um, school districts and the academic stress and some of their requirements from the court outs and things like that. And then a lot of the notices we get from Ohio Department of Education, they're looking at modifying some of those communication types. And, um, let's see. And then there's some financial things that I'm just trying to understand, some of those bills. And next slide. And one of the big things they're asking districts to do, of course, is to connect with their local legislators and just talk about lots of things about what the district and, um, encouraging them, um, their votes or their input on by indoor budget and also the fair school funding plan. So looking to continue to give that the school, the district, uh, amount that, um, that they wish to be put forth. So that's what they call the act of awareness in a seat that, uh, they're not supposed to. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Questions for, uh, Google?
If not, can we go back to the very first slide with the training update?
Yes.
The one training that I think that someone had expressed interest in going to is coming up here.
I heard one.
Yeah, correct?
Yeah, that's the board two oh one.
And you all thought. Yes, so you, you're planning on attending that?
Yes.
And you're planning on attending that? So we would need to take a motion to be in compliance with that.
Yes, okay, yes.
Is that on the end?
Yeah, we added it very.
Okay, because I've been finding on this part how we had it and I would recommend such as a very hard.
I was on, I just wanted to make sure that that was on there while we were there, okay?
And then there's the Board Leadership Institute in April.
So it's on, okay. I, I just didn't, I must have flipped the page too many.
It's item thirteen. Thank you, Mr. Allen. So between the superintendent's office and my office, once it's through.
It's on, okay, I just wanted to make sure because I knew that I thought it was before we edited it.
All right. Thank you for going back to the slide. Uh, any other updates from the board members? We did receive a thank you from the Zappa family, we'll just pass it around, I'll read it. You can all read it so that you can, uh, I'll just pass it around to the board so they can read that from that perspective. Is there any other discussion or committee reports that we need to have updated on? Seeing none, we'll go to personnel recommendations.
All right, for personnel recommendations, we have a few, um, common recommendations such as new hires, resignation or two, also some changes in contract for certain probationary staff members. Also wanted just to point out, because we had this, I think it was back in December, um, item L, Judy Alexander, who's been on the library board for twenty years, is leaving on February first. So if you recall, we approved for the library Jimmy York's, I think, in December to be, to continue his term. And so, uh, Mr. Devault sent me another, um, person, Elizabeth Hugh, to replace Judy as the library trustee. And I believe we attached her resume, correct?
Yes.
So just for your, for you to approve, um, that new library trustee for that. So with that, I'd like to request, uh, the board look at the personnel recommendations A through O.
Do a motion in a second for items ten, eight through O. Is there discussion or comment on any of those items? Seeing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis, aye. Mrs. Wachfolds, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mr. Zappa, aye. Mr. Angle, aye.
Motion passed. Educational recommendations, item eleven on the agenda.
Maybe a few here and a couple of things I just want to point out. Uh, item eleven A, uh, last year for the first time after going to online testing, uh, we had the option to draw third grade back to paper testing. It's the only grade level you can go back to paper testing. Uh, and so last year was the first time we actually did that, um, and power staff kind of reviewed test results and scores. And they requested that we continue that for next year, both for reading and math. So that our third grade students will take, um, Ohio State tests by paper, reading and math next year. As we have to pass a resolution and submit, I think, before May at some point to, uh, let the state know that we, we're going to do that through paper testing for third grade only next year, okay? Also, um, item C, uh, asking you to approve an open enrollment program for students who might want to enter our district, uh, for space available. Again, that's just for, uh, for you all to approve the possibility of open enrollment. Years ago, we used to have open enrollment K through twelve, and then the last few years it kind of tripped down to just junior high school, then just high school. I think last year was just like one or two grade levels. So I just want you to approve the possibility for open enrollment, and then we will go back with our principals and take a look at if we do have space available in any grade levels, we might open it up to fill those spots for students outside of our community, okay? And then D, real quick, it's the, uh, the first, I guess, first draft of the approval of the program studies for Steel next year. And that is really so they can present that to students and start, uh, putting information out there, meeting with students and getting their requests for the different classes. Again, there might be a revision after we know, some record, after the students kind of make their request. There might be some changes after, they might add some classes or remove some classes. So we may see the, the program studies come back again in a month or two, but this is the first ones we can really talk about. Okay? And with that, I'd like to recommend educational items eleven A through eleven I.
Do a motion in a second, please? I've heard the motion. Just a second. Any discussion or comments?
I do have a question. How about open enrollment, just to clarify, you know, the answer, but, so most of the time, if someone's already open enrollment, so it's room, you give them first tips so that they get to come back, right?
Correct, yes, so, so everyone who has been open enrollment in the past, assuming they have a spot right now, we always send information to them for them to re-roll.
Okay.
First chance, absolutely.
Okay.
Both, but again, that.
Yeah.
Coming in the future, if we do start having growth, we have to make sure we communicate with those families. Because again, even though they've been here in, let's say, kindergarten through sixth grade, I mean, there's a possibility down the road that if our residents and students start to fill those classes, um, at any point someone could, we don't have space in our grade levels, so. But yes, you're correct, everyone who's already here is given the opportunity to stay there.
I have a question about that too. Um, any district employees, they're not part of it, right, but their kids can.
Correct, it's in the negotiated agreement, that is. Any, any employees will always have open enrollment in the district, yep.
I have another question about part A.
Yes.
So, um, I guess what did the third grade teachers, I guess, what were their observations of online first paper?
Um, their observation was, again, uh, being their first experience with testing and having, you know, the test in their hand and being able to manipulate things and, um, that, that was good for them, especially like for the math portion. Even though they always have, like, you know, your sheet, you always do some, it's just different, you had in front of you. Um, and they just wanted to see, make sure there were no, like, our scores didn't decrease at all, which they did not. Uh, so they wanted to recommend, we really let the decision up to those teachers, so that's what they wanted to do.
On item E, we have the contracts, we have the contract that would be, I assume, used between the half and the square. Are any of those our people that were issued that for, are they all outside of this, this? I think, I think maybe one is too, but I was just curious.
Uh, one, Christopher Lash is not an employee, but he has been, he has done other work in band for many years. So he's been employed in that, in that, in that process.
And when we have this contract, if it were to be not an employee, did he do a background check on them? Since it would be building, I mean, that's where I was annoyed.
I believe so.
They all have their background checks. It was in the email. They all have cleared backgrounds.
Okay, okay, I just, okay, I just wanted to make sure because if they were our employees, I knew they would have cleared that. But if they were outside some contract that we just brought off of the street, I just wanted to make sure that we had done a background check. Okay? Any other questions? Having none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis, aye. Mr. Zappa, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mrs. Wachfolds, aye. Mr. Angle, aye.
Motion passed. Business recommendations.
Yeah, we have just four this evening, um, items twelve A through twelve D. Again, pointing out item C is the bid, uh, Jen, I am doing second bid for Williams Brothers for the Steel Makers based renovations. So I'd like to recommend items twelve A through twelve D to the board.
Do a motion in a second, please? Motion in a second. Discussion and comments? Anyone has anything? Please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis, aye. Mr. Zappa, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mrs. Wachfolds, aye. Mr. Angle, aye.
Aye, motion passed. Item thirteen, board recommendations. We have an item on here, let's see, A, which is the Board two oh one deeper dive with this concept of region. And the Board Leadership Institute two, I believe, uh, is coming up. We are having a motion.
I'll make that motion. Am I allowed the second?
Yes.
Yeah.
The motion in a second, so two will be attending, uh, Leader Institute for twenty-three. Uh, I believe it's an independence, correct?
The Board's.
Two oh one is an independence. For the others, I just see you with the staff here. Any other questions or comments? Have fun. Please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis, aye. Dr. Messer, aye. Mrs. Wachfolds, aye. Mr. Zappa, aye. Mr. Angle, aye.
Motion passed. I don't believe there's anything else for this evening.
I do. I have, we do a quick executive session to discuss personnel and personnel.
Certainly. We would take a motion entering to executive session.
Second.
For the purpose of a personnel discussion with no action to take? We had a motion in a second, correct?
Yes.
Please call the board.
Dr. Messer, aye. Mrs. Gillis, aye. Mrs. Wachfolds, aye. Mr. Zappa, aye. Mr. Angle, aye.